You can turn on your microphone.
Yeah, Kevin, if you guys could turn your mics to, that'd be great.
Do you know if I, over there, just so I can see the?
Absolutely not, that's fine. You know, pals coming.
We did not hear from them on so many news, but.
We have room for two, right? Yeah, we got playroom. So let's start off, everybody, ready to go? Okay, the special meeting, Planning and Zoning Commission is called to order, it's a roll call. Michael.
Eric.
And Steve.
Here.
Kevin.
Here.
Myself, and I guess Warren, would you sit in for Hal unless he shows up?
Of course.
Thank you very much, appreciate that. Okay, let's see, public communications, we did receive a few writing before the meeting. So thank you for distributing those, if we ever had a chance to look at them. So tonight, we have new business.
Wonderful.
Regulation and policy impacts on housing choice and affordability. Presentation by Eric Kronberg, Kronberg Urbanists and Architects and Julie Barrett. Barrett Planning Group, so staff, would you like to go ahead or do you want to introduce the?
Yeah, thank you.
Presenters?
Yeah, so we'll introduce the.
This is John Reiner.
Yeah, so, John Reiner, Director of Planning and Development, so thanks, everybody. So tonight, we are going to have some presentations from Eric and Judy, Jeff Davis is also on the Zoom. I think he'll have a few introduction slides, but kind of the purpose of tonight, as we've been working on our Planet Conservation and Development, the last meeting, we went over a lot of the transportation type stuff. But I think two, three meetings ago, a number of the commission members had brought up some questions about housing and wanted to talk a little bit about, housing has been such a big issue in Groton and kind of dive a little bit deeper into the data, a little bit of the background on how we got here and where we're going. So tonight, we'll hear from some national level experts, the stuff that we'll hear from Eric and Judy. These are things that we normally hear at some of our like professional development conferences. They'll dive into some Groton specific stuff, but also some national level stuff and talk about some things that we want to consider for future type policies, but nothing's being proposed right now for a zoning text amendment or a change. So I want to make that very clear. And then our next meeting that we get into P O D, P O C D type stuff for Groton 2035. Tom from Camoyn and Associates will be talking about the older housing market analyses and kind of some of the things that they did on those and some of the assumptions that we're looking at moving forward and with that data. So, you know, getting a good handle on housing, but housing isn't everything. Next week, we'll be kicking off our climate action plan, so you'll be hearing some about that moving forward. Last week or a couple of weeks back, we actually had one of our community conversations about flooding. So there's a lot of information that we're sharing with you, but tonight's focus is really about housing and thinking about things on a Groton and a little bit of a regional scale. But, you know, we've been hearing a lot about it, so we wanted to kind of give you access to these experts at the national level. Give them a presentation to you and then give you the opportunity to ask some questions. So with that, I think I was handing it over to Jeff from Horsley Witten, and I think he had a few slides to go through, and then he was going to hand it over to Eric.
Yes, sir. So let me just pull up my screen. Good, looks like everyone can see that. John actually covered a lot of what I was going to cover, so I'll be very brief so we can get to our presenters for this evening. Again, the whole point of this was to honor the PCC's request to have some time to set aside some time to talk about housing policy in Groton. So as John mentioned, this is the first of two meetings that we've set aside for this. So the, the hope is that this will inform the P O C D, that this will help inform the Missing Middle Housing Project Meeting in the Middle, which I'll talk a bit more about in a second. And also inform generally PCC decision making. So this, this evening is not specifically about any of those one things, but we hope will inform a number of your decisions moving forward. So again, we are joined by Eric Kronberg of Kronberg Urbanist Architects out of Atlanta and Judy Barrett of Barrett Planning Group out of Massachusetts. Both are national experts on, on housing. Eric and his team have been really at the forefront of the, the concept of abundant housing and making our, our regulations friendly to abundance as opposed to scarcity. And Judy and her team have decades of experience all over New England, helping communities develop housing policy and, and production plans. And we're really thrilled to have both of them on this team. So for this evening, Eric is primarily going to start with a presentation and then we'll open it up to conversation between Judy and Eric and the PCC. Just for anyone who is listening at home, this, this will be a discussion with the PCC, but we are, you know, very happy for anyone who is listening at home to, to listen, and we'll have other opportunities to engage directly with the public in the future. Did want to very briefly just give some context to the Missing Middle Housing Project, which the town is referring to as Meeting in the Middle, Unlocking Housing Opportunities in Groton. This is a project that is just kicking off. I do want to thank any of the steering committee members from that project who may be listening in today. We appreciate you taking the time and look forward to scheduling a formal kickoff for that soon. But in the interim, we thought this would be a really interesting presentation for everyone to hear. So very quickly, when we talk about Missing Middle Housing, what are we even talking about? What is this project meant to do? So this is an illustration of what we mean by Missing Middle Housing. So it's really anything that's between a standard, single family standalone house and those larger scale apartment buildings on the other side of the screen. So this is two families, three families, bungalows, townhouses, small scale apartment buildings. So through this project, we want to help Groton consider, are any of these housing types useful for Groton? If you don't have them today, do you think they would be useful? And if so, where in town do you think they would be useful? So in terms of deliverables for this project, number one is the Regional Housing Demand Study that John mentioned and that we'll be talking about with the PCC on September 23rd. Next, the housing types that I mentioned, we're working with Union Studio Architects to develop some potential typologies of these types of housing and discuss with this group and the community which might be useful. We will also be doing build out analyses. So based on the Regional Housing Demand Study, how much of that local demand can be accommodated by these housing types and where? And we want to do that by specifically looking at up to 10 scenarios, picking some specific sites and showing, all right, if you were to allow this, what might it actually look like on the ground? And then finally, if the PCC and the community so chooses and would like to find ways to accommodate these housing types in zoning, we will discuss regulatory changes that you might want to make. So again, come back here, September 23rd, for anyone who wants to come visit in person or online, 5:00 to 6:30. Camoyn Associates will be presenting their analysis of regional housing demand as a follow up to the analyses they completed in 2021 and 2023. So this will really be an opportunity for the PCC to ask any questions you have about the, the past studies, about the methodology of this current analysis and really just get comfortable, get dirty. You know, whatever, whatever questions you have to make sure you're comfortable with the, the approach and the results. As John mentioned, there's a lot going on in town, a lot of different planning efforts. They are related, but not, but, but separate. So including the, the P O C D, Climate Ready Groton and the Meeting in the Middle Housing Project. So upcoming meetings this month, September 16th, P O C D will be meeting again with the EDC and the Conservation Commission to review all the draft policies in the P O C D. On September 18th, we'll have the kickoff to the climate plan. That will be the very illiterative popsicles in the park at Paquannic Plains Park. So all on the public are encouraged to attend that to learn more. Again, on September 23rd, we'll be back here for the conversation on the housing analysis. And on September 29th, the P O C D, P O C D meeting of the PCC to explore the housing land use and economic development components of the P O C D. So as always, for the public, if you are ever wondering about the agenda packets and, or, or to go back and review videos of past meetings, you can always find that at groton-connecticut.gov. Or for more information about any of these projects, there's a lot of great information on greatergroton.com. So encourage everyone to visit there. So with that, I will stop sharing.
Well, I just have one question, Jeff. As I was thinking about this whole project and housing, I'm glad we're doing such deep dives, I guess, three deep dives into it, which is great. I was curious though, given our current regulations and we do have like ADUs, accessory dwelling units that some people, as I understand it, have applied for and it's been of some success. And we also have, of course, cottage housing with regulations we did some time ago, and that has not been used to date. And then we also have, I think, still some short term rentals that have never been grandfathered into our current regulations for short term rentals. And we're waiting, if we have a new council, perhaps that would change and that could free up some inventory houses too. But I was just curious, if you did a bill, I mean, we're talking about build out analyses, which is a great idea to do. But what is the build out analysis if you took all of our current possibilities? And not that you could go to 100% usage, but say, say you did, how many units would that give us if we even just took our current regulations? And I know it's a big question, maybe it's an impossible question, but even your best.
It's actually not. So we have, and this is the first time Horsley Witten has used this tool, but there are some new RGIS mapping tools. And one of the things that we've been working early on is to develop a base map within that system of all the parcels in the town. And we can input what zoning allows today. And basically, we can use that to say, all right, one of our scenarios will likely be, let's say that our regulations remain the same and we maximize our existing regulations. What could that produce? And of course, we have to make some assumptions, not every single household that is allowed to produce an ADU is going to build one there. You know, any number of reasons why people would choose or not choose to, to do that. So I don't think it's realistic to say, well, at, at full build out, we're going to assume 100% of the properties that can build an ADU will. But also, I, I think, you know, I think what we can do is come up with a reasonable methodology, saying, all right, it's reasonable that X percentage of houses might take advantage of this, that in the future, X number of parcels might take advantage of your cottage community zoning and see where we are. So that would be build out scenario number one. And then when we're back on the 23rd, Camoyn is going to present to you their assumptions for other build out scenarios. And we'll be using that same program to test out, all right, if we introduce these other housing typologies, where are we? And it, it could be that you end up hitting a lot of your targets without adding a whole bunch more, I don't know yet. But that will be part of the analysis.
Okay, that sounds good. I think I would like to know what the maximum number is. If everybody in town fell in love with ADUs, for example, I mean, what is the potential? I just think it's always good to know what the maximum is when you're planning to change zoning and add housing, so. I'm not saying, I'm not saying it will be achieved either, but just to know what that target was and then why you, of course, took a lesser one, which I would.
Yeah, so that's the fun thing with this program is you can change the parameters and punch out different numbers. And so we want to say, okay, in theory, everyone who's allowed to create an ADU creates an ADU, what does that do for us? Even if it's not realistic, at least you would, you would have that number.
Thanks a lot.
Sue, so as a deliverable, I believe that one is due for the, the DOD, because this is under the umbrella of the DOD project, that should be due in March, the build out analyses. So those will be three different scenarios, status quo, kind of a middle scenario, and then, you know, exceptional scenario or a moonshot scenario.
Yeah, good, thanks.
Could I have one question too?
Sure.
So I understand the outcomes for today, but, um, and I know Jeff's very close to this and John, I know you are as well. But we have some, and I think it was part of a public comment that we received. But we have some issues that is a observation, not a judgment. And we haven't done anything from a compliance standpoint on STRs, right? We haven't done anything, in my opinion, again, observation and judgment on parking. And the vacant properties, we keep, you know, doing one offside. And to me, and the current zones, of course, those four things add into, I believe, what we're going to have today. And when do we put those things together that haven't been done in Groton? That to me have a material impact as far as we move forward. So I'm not sure we're going to cover that tonight, John, but.
Yeah, we won't be covering those tonight, but some of those topics we will be covering in the future again. I think we're going to be getting into the nitty gritty with a lot of our different chapters for the Planet Conservation and Development. Some of these things will be covered, big picture in the P O C D in Groton 2035, others. It's going to be, our, our goal is to address managing those types of situations and trying to do them not as one offs or, you know, kind of the things that you were saying. So there are things we want to get to, but all of this stuff takes time.
Yeah, I understand.
Okay, all right, thanks.
All right, well, with that, I would love to turn it over to Eric. Eric, you have your presentation up, are you able to share your screen?
I am ready to share, right?
Duper, duper.
Um, let me get a little bit of screen cleaned up to get zoom. Can you guys still see my screen? Because I had to minimize zoom.
Yes, we can see that.
Awesome, okay, great. Well, I will dig in. So thanks for having me, really help, excited to be a part of the team and help out. So Kronberg Urbanists and Architects for K U A, we're a multidisciplinary team that focuses on a range of issues from architecture, planning, urban design, we do a lot of historic preservation, but we do a lot of policymaking and or real estate development. And so it's playing in all these sandboxes that give us the ability to look at problems from different angles. And we're doing this always to make flourishing neighborhoods. And so we always position ourselves, we partner for vibrant places, inclusive places, which matters deeply to us. And also lasting places, like these are the things we're looking to celebrate. And a couple of prompt questions that we always like to ask are, you know, should the people that serve our communities afford to live here? Right, you know, housing's expensive, municipal wages often do not keep up with the price of housing. Is this a policy that a city should care about? You know, should seniors be able to downsize and not leave their neighborhood where their social connections are and, you know, their, their history and their place? You know, should they have possibilities, different kinds of housing that would allow that? You know, should kids these days have a chance to own a home before they're 38? Which is the median age of the first time home buyer nationally, and it's going up every year. You know, and should people have a choice to safely walk or bike for some of their trips? Right, are these things that are worth prioritizing in our communities? You know, we believe they are, obviously, I wouldn't put the slides in. But again, when we talk about these flourishing neighborhoods, we are looking to help improve and create neighbors that are economically and socially vibrant, inclusive and lasting. That's why we get out of bed every day to help communities. And so again, like I said, we play in a lot of sandboxes, you know, urban design, Main Street redevelopment, housing choice, housing options, we care a lot about. We also do our own developments, so we're able to provide development guidance to non-profic municipalities to help understand what the real barriers are to getting housing and major redevelopment done on the ground. And how all this relates to zoning and policy. And really understanding all of these pieces allows them to snap them together to make for a coherent puzzle, to get to better outcomes for everywhere. And so as we talk about these things, I want to start with this really critical Venn diagram that we see everywhere, you know, everybody wants stable services, they want low taxes and they want low density, right? That's hearing after hearing, these are citizens' demands. The challenge is, if you want low density and low taxes, you're going to have service cuts. You want stable services and low density, you're going to have high taxes. The alternative is, I want stable services and low taxes, you're going to have to have more density to help fuel and fund your municipality and provide the services and infrastructure repairs and maintenance you need. The, the middle doesn't exist, there is no magic middle to this one. It's helpful for citizens to understand that is a fantasy that's not achievable. And so when we talk about the difference of abundance and scarcity, you know, the only section of this overlap in this Venn diagram that allows for more options, more choices for seniors, for first time home buyers, is going to be this more density qua overlap in some form or fashion. The challenge is, how do you make it contextual and appropriate for your place in Groton? Yeah, so we'd like to ask, what are the land use and zoning patterns that promote abundance? And what are the ones that promote scarcity? You know, we can be intentional with our choices for our places of which we'd rather see more of. And so on a whole bit of housing mismatch and talk about data, a, a Tom from Camoyn was grateful, or I was grateful he was able to share a handful of his data points. He still were finishing things up, but we were able to show a handful of things to set some context. You know, one thing, you know, you've over the past 15 years, you know, almost a 6% decline in population. And now a significant increase in the percent of the population that are senior citizens, you know, 20, over 20% now, and that's a 7% increase. Also note that 40% of seniors in Groton live alone. And you've had a declining population for the last decade. But you've also, in that same time period, added 650 households since 20, since 2010. How the heck does that happen? This is standard national demographics, and I'll try to be very intentional in talking Groton specific versus national. But in America in the 1950s, we were averaging about 3.8 people per household. And by 2017, we've seen nominally across the nation that we're about 2.5 people per household. What that means is you need 50% more houses to house the same number of people. And we're on track in America in the next couple of years to be a lot closer to two people per household than even 2.5, which means you need 100% more houses, twice as many houses in 2030 to house the same number of people than you would in 1950. That's how you can have declining population and an increase in households in your city. And the question is, between these two, would you rather see a bunch of really large houses being built if you even had the land? Or would you want to look at policies that allow for a range of house sizes and a range of places to be more contextual to your place? We like to point out that allowing big houses that are expensive and unattainable are legal everywhere in America, that's how we make our country run. This kind of mix of housing choices is rarely legal, and it takes a lot of intentional work in cities to legalize those and bring them to policies to bring that to bear. This gets back to house size, again, this is national, but not only were we less than, around four people were housed in 1950, our houses were less than 1,000 square feet and we were building in less than 300 square feet per person. By 2017, the average house size ballooned to 2,571, it's gone up to 2650-ish, I think, by 2023, 2024. But we're building over 1,000 square feet per person, right? That's a three and a half times increase in the size of housing per person. We wonder why we have an attainable housing prices in this country, we're building a lot of big bloated things. Let me pop that back up. Oh, sorry. And then the other thing we wanted to look at for Groton, when you look at your household sizes, you know, 33% of your households are one person, another 37% are only a mid of two people. That's 70% of your households are one and two person households. You know, only 14% are four people or more. So to give you a sense of who you are, this is just the numbers from Camoyn as to what your household makeup is. You know, one thing that we see, this is national again, this hopefully is not surprising or dramatic, but the size of the household changes based on the age of the household. In other words, when you're a starter household, you may be roommates or a couple, starting out, you probably don't have kids at this age because kids are too expensive in America. You know, you've got to get into peak earnings season to be able to have kids and need that larger household, have that larger household size. And then as hopefully kids get out of the house and go to college and, you know, don't come back to the nest, you tend to see declining household sizes into downsizing households at 65 plus. So this is national, this is why you start to see a lot of one and two person households in your city as you have an aging population. Again, starter peak and downsizing, easy ways to think about this and the kinds of homes that are housing are more typical for these different age and income brackets. The other thing that we like to point out is, this is national again, but in the 1980s, from 1980 to 2010, the vast majority of housing demand was for peak household, right? The baby boomers and their kids needed a bunch of big houses for all the families. All of these boomers are aging, that is happening, there's no way to slow that down. And so for the next 20 plus years, we're going to see a massive increase in need for downsizing households, right? Big four or five bedroom houses are not necessarily the best fit for this kind of age demographic. The other thing we like to share is that, you know, we used to build a lot of smaller houses. In 1970, almost 40% of the houses built were less than 1,400 square feet. By 2021, 2022, about 8% of our houses are less than 1,400 square feet. We don't build starter, starter homes because if you only allow one home per lot, the rational thing for a builder to do is build a big house. So this is a policy implication. And as we look at this, we look at the household sizes from Groton, these are your household unit sizes, right? You've got less than 1% are studios, that's that little thin line at the top. You know, 14% are one beds, 34% are two beds, but 50% of your housing stock is large format housing. 70% of your households are small format households. We're not saying that a one person, one person shouldn't be entitled to live in a four bedroom house, but we're saying we should have more options that calibrate, if you do want to downsize into something smaller, you should have a chance to do that. There's not a lot of options for that, and there's often not a lot of options in the specific neighborhoods people like to downsize into. Right, you know, the other thing we point out time and again is there's, depending on how you ask the question, from National Association Realtors, there's a lot of demand to live in walkable neighborhoods, you know, there's, you know, particularly by Mystic River, or, you know, there's a lot of great areas that are walkable and supportive that often don't allow as much housing as they used to under historic development patterns. And there's a large demand for people that would like to live there relative to people that do. They can't because housing is scarce and it's expensive, so it becomes economically exclusive. Again, most of our house.
Could you just go a little slower?
Yeah.
I'm having a hard time hearing, not, it's my ears, but also you speak so quickly that I can't even, it just, I appreciate it, thank you.
I had a couple of questions, if you don't mind.
Absolutely.
Something you said in.
Sue, do you, do you want to wait till the end for questions or?
I really get it now.
Oh, okay.
I'm not sure I'll be here at the end. No, just because there's a lot of material, so the end may not be, I think the end is going to be. I think initially you said, basically, that people who work in town should have almost the right to live in town, did I understand that correctly?
That's, that's a question for you to ask yourselves.
Does that mean that they still have a choice though of where to live, right? I mean, if you look at, if you look at everybody in town, not everybody wants to live in Groton, I know it's a big surprise, but it's true. And different, you know, tranches of income and everything else, there's not 100% living here, people all over the place. So I didn't know if you had different standards for thinking who you think ought to be allowed to live in, say, a, a town like this.
Well, no, I think the way, the way to think about the question is, when you think about, people use the term workforce housing a lot, I like attainable housing better. But if you think about what are the salaries for your public servants, you know, for police, fire, nurses, you, you know, people that work the trash trucks, whatever the job is, like, is it reasonable to expect that there could or should be housing options that are attainable for people of those salaries that serve your city? I'm not saying there should or shouldn't be, but should, that's a question for you all to think about.
Okay, but you understand that young EB engineers who are making probably in the 80s or so, half of their take home income goes towards a rent, right, in this town? Just like, it used to, when I went to Manhattan, my first job, half of my take home went to rent. So, but that's, that would be a big thing to change. I don't know how much housing you'd have, you may never change because, you know, we have limited land and all that. But that's why, I'm not sure you understand our situation here, right? It's a little bit different.
Well, yeah, well, I, I think every town is facing a housing shortage in America, right? And housing is, every, and housing is very expensive, and every city we see in America, declining populations, growing populations. And it is always a question of what are the goals you set for inclusivity of your town? Right, and this is a high level, this isn't trying to say that, hey, you should make sure all the firefighters should get to live here, but not the nurses or like parsing out different, you know, jobs. This is a question of what are your goals for inclusivity as a city at the 50,000 foot level, right? This is not about at like specific policy at a low level. This is, is it a reasonable goal to try to have housing options, not maybe writ large, maybe not everybody should live or choose to live? But is this a goal that you should consider for your, your town? And if the, and if there's no, that we are not actually worried about being economically inclusive in our town, And if the, and if there's no, that we are not actually worried about being economically inclusive in our town, that's the choice you get to make, and that has a lot of ramifications.
Well, I think, um, I think it would be interesting again, when you look at what's being built in the town, the projects we've approved and everything. There's quite a mix of housing in there and they're not, um, you know, hundreds of big, huge mega mansions. I think that latest one we did for, um, close to the sub base, there were what more studios I think than anything? And that, uh, what about a hundred units? Um, so I, I think if you look at what we're really approving now, we're approving a lot of more condensed housing actually, so.
Which is, which is wonderful and laudable and commendable. And I think part of like, there's another follow up question is how is that meeting the demand or the need? And that's definitely a thing for Kamoine, like, you know, they've looked at that in their, their analysis. And so that's definitely something for the next meeting. And I don't want to try to steal their thunder, or, you know, I don't have all their data, but that's something they're deeply concerned about and looking at relative to housing in the town of Groton, but also housing that's being approved and delivered to regional. Right? So it's not just, you're not an island, right? You're part of a region. There's other things going on. People, you know, come into working Groton, leave Groton both ways, and Kamoine has some really, really great data that speaks to that stuff.
Yeah, I understand. We look forward to that meeting too.
All right, I will slow down.
And also, very, very quickly, Eric, I just want to jump into some of the questions that some of you might ask. Actually, might get addressed a little bit later in his presentation because I know some of the why this stuff is happening is going to be coming up. And again, just to kind of step back and think about Groton twenty thirty five, our plan of conservation and development. It's up to the town, it's up to the commission to set the policy for what do you want Groton to look like over the next ten years? So we present this data, this information, so you're more aware, more knowledgeable, but at the end of the day, you're going to set what the baseline is for zoning and what's allowed and what's not allowed. And that choice comes to you and that's, you know, why he was asking what your goal is and things to think about.
No, I appreciate that, but I really didn't read the whole presentation.
Yeah.
But the policy, that's why I think we should listen, maybe hold our questions to the end. So I really want to get to what they say about policy as well. So, okay.
And I, I'm happy to keep going. And I will say a lot of what I'm talking about tonight is trade offs, barriers and optionality as opposed to you should pass this policy or that policy. This is very much context setting for why housing does or doesn't get delivered. So um, I'm going to skip through some of these. One thing just to talk briefly about, I always like to level set with folks, you know, we in the housing space talk about area median income or AMI a lot, and that just may not mean much to anybody who's not in the, this world. And so a hundred percent of AMI, just as a quick refresher, is the midpoint of regional income. That means half the people make more. Half the people make less. It is not an average. It's just, you know, the numbers in the middle, the median. And these are the words we typically use to talk about housing relative to percents of AMI. Whether it's deeply affordable, affordable, attainable, or workforce often spans this band from sometimes sixty to eighty percent to one twenty percent, but usually whenever a hundred twenty percent, we're talking about market rates in terms of what the housing is. And for twenty twenty three, a hundred percent of, um, AMI for Groton for a household was eighty three thousand, three hundred dollars. That's for a family of four. This is from Kamoine. This is just to help you level set what we, when we say a hundred percent of AMI. That is what that number is for right now. The median home value just also to help level set in twenty twenty five is over three hundred and sixty one thousand dollars. And what we've seen, and this is all from Kamoine's data, that from twenty ten to twenty twenty five, you've had a nine percent change in median household income for owners, but an eighty six percent change in mortgage payments on the median home. Right? This is where those lines of income and housing costs absolutely diverge in a significant fashion. And for renters, you've actually seen.
Can you back up on that?
Yep.
Did you say, oh, just ten years, there's only been a nine percent increase in income?
Ten, ten years, yeah. And this is adjusted for inflation. Right? Inflation chews away at your earning potential. This is from Kamoine. I'm just, I pulled, pulled a few teasers to level set. But this is, this is Kamoine's data. That's what they're seeing adjusted for inflation of where this is. The other component of this interest rates also dramatically increased housing payments, right? So this is where incomes have changed. This is where mortgage payments have changed. Right? It's, it's brutal.
But not everybody's paying that because a lot of people are midway in their thirty year mortgages or something, right?
Right, but, but these are the, these are the prices for housing now, right?
It'd be an incremental cost, but that does, I think it's unfair to say eighty six percent. Oh, my gosh.
Well, that, that's the change.
What is the percentage of Groton residents that own their homes and are not paying a mortgage? I think we have that number somewhere, don't we?
Yeah, I don't have it. That's, Kamoine has that.
It's less than thirty percent, I think, if I remember.
And I, I would also, if for these specific data points, uh, Tom from Kamoine will be happy to walk you through where, how this data, you know, where it comes from to, to level set, but this is if you want to buy a house today, it's a lot more expensive because interest rates are a lot higher. Obviously, if you've already bought a house and you're in place and you've got a locked in three percent mortgage rate, that's awesome for you, right?
I under, I understand that, but your slide isn't really necessarily saying that, okay?
This is again, this is what Kamoine's saying for housing now versus housing ten years ago.
Kamoine's slide, yep.
Yeah. So let me keep going if I can.
Yeah, sorry, Sue, just quickly, Hal is here now. Do you want to?
Oh, sure.
Uh, he's online.
I'm sorry, Hal, I see you.
I'll, I'll be in and out. I'm sorry, but I just want to pick up on just this one slide. Is that, so I understand the nine percent is adjusted for inflation. Is the eighty six percent adjusted for inflation or is that just the difference?
Uh, basically, they looked at the average mortgage in twenty thirteen. What it costs to pay for an average mortgage on an average house in twenty thirteen versus what is the mortgage payment for an average house in twenty twenty three? So you've got a significant change in house prices and a significant change in interest rates. So both of those things work in concert together to change that eighty six percent, to get to eighty six.
Okay, okay. So, so I think, I think you might have answered it, but I think that might be why this looks so wild. And maybe as insane as it looks because the eighty six percent is real change in mortgage. Yeah, wages in the last ten years have doubled, but that's not adjusted for inflation.
Uh, uh.
Yeah, the nine percent is adjusted for inflation, so that we have an apples and orange number here, which I can defend.
And I'll, I'll, I'll kick it to Tom to dig into that, right? But I think the bottom line is it is a lot more expensive today to pay for a mortgage on a house if you're buying a house today than it was ten years ago. And the incomes of.
Good. I was going to just say, there's multiple slides, okay, that we expect on housing costs for homeowners, housing costs for renters and how those have increased in different permutations of how you calculate that.
Right, just one, um, administrative point here though, with Hal's odd in the wings, right?
But he's, he said he's coming in.
And he's coming in and out though. Um, was staff okay to leave things? I just want to see issues with that. Okay, thank you.
Is, is Hal still able to participate?
So I can be, so you'll still be seated, okay?
Right, but is he able to participate? Because I know.
He said on and off, yes. Yep. Thank you.
All right, let me click back in. So the other thing from Kamoine, the average renter income over the past ten years has, has decreased by point one percent, again, adjusted for inflation. But what is the change in gross rent from twenty twenty, twenty thirteen to twenty twenty three? It's been almost a nineteen percent increase. Right? So incomes aren't going up, rents are going up significantly. Just again, this is from Kamoine. I'm happy to have Tom walk you through the methodology for all of this.
Right, because when they have, when they have more expensive rental units now than we did, because we keep adding on things that the rentals are quite high.
But keep in mind, most of those rental units that you've approved haven't been built yet, so they're not online.
Understand, but I don't think everybody else is just sitting on their hands either, you know, with low rents, so. I think there's a lot of pressure on rents, seems to be because of the increase in employment and stuff.
Is, is it fair to say generally that these numbers are reflective of national trends as well?
Uh, abso- absolutely. It's just a question of degree. Um, yeah, it's absolutely just.
Sorry, go ahead.
It is absolutely reflective of national trends. Uh, we don't know any city in America that is doing a good job building enough housing to meet its needs. I mean, that's just like flat out. It's, it's more a question of change in housing demand, and I think the point for Groton that we see a lot of places is you could have, you have a declining population and a significant increase in households. Right? That means you're short on houses. Like, that's, that's where these pressures and these numbers, that's, that's what drives these changes. And so we always like to point out, and this is national, we look at minimum wage, this may not be a concern for y'all, but if you're making fifteen bucks an hour, that means you're making about thirty thousand dollars a year and you need to find housing for eight hundred dollars a month. We like to point out that this is amazingly hard, if not impossible, in most cities in America, but there's a significant portion of jobs in every city that this is the need that is not being met. Uh, the other thing we like to point out is, oh, it's the housing ladder, and when you're short on housing, everybody's competing for what's left. And what we mean by that is in your choicest neighborhoods, you know, the doctors and lawyers are fighting over houses, um, tech guys, whatever the, the job is for your town per se. But when there's enough houses there, they tend to buy down to the next neighborhood down, which forces out people to the next neighbor, next neighborhood. And what we see time and again, and particularly in this workforce band of housing, again, police, teachers, firefighters, there is just no housing that can be built in this price point, and what is there has been priced up. And what we do see is there tends to be not a significant amount, but a moderate amount of very low income, extremely low income housing. And that's because of low income housing tax credits. There's no policies that delivers any kind of housing in this band, and this is the greatest shortage in most cities. And most of what we spend our time on is looking at ways to enable this need to be met more and better across the country. And so we like to point out that our current housing stock isn't nearly as diverse as we are, and it's more out of reach for more and more people. And so how did the system get so broken? And again, I'm not trying to say that Groton especially, you are very much, you know, right down the middle with these challenges for better or worse. Um, and what I'd like to talk about is, we want to talk about the cost of low density and what this, how this impacts municipal budgets, outcomes for places. And so when we talk about scarcity and we talk about, um, abundance, it often comes down to single family only zoning versus more housing choices. This is a really easy way to divide the, the inputs and outputs, what happens. What I like to point out is when you have large lot, single family housing, you know, that means you have one house per lot. These lots shown on the screen are to scale. They're pretty equivalent to your R twelve zoning district in terms of minimum lot size. But what we also like to talk about is it's not just the price of the houses. It's the value from a normalized for area. So we divide the total area by the total value of these to get a value per acre. This scenario has a value per acre of one point three million, which is more than the two of these combined because this is less than an acre of land. You're dividing by less than one, the number goes up on the numerator for the output. And so we like to talk about how single family only zoning is a policy of legally mandated scarcity. And what you see is, you know, you may have a, a nuclear family living in a house, uh, detached single family, but more and more in cities across America, you tend to have the aging senior that you, one could argue is overhoused in a four or five bedroom house, doesn't want to move because wants to stay in his neighborhood, and you end up having all these people in household formations that are not able to participate in this community because there's no housing for them because the land has been scarcely locked up. And it also requires a lot of infrastructure. When we mean by infrastructure, we're talking sidewalks, curbs, trees, utilities, some municipalities provide utilities, but that's still a cost that has to be managed and maintained. You've got traffic lights, the systems for that. Hopefully, you've got street lights as an amenity for your citizens. And then you've got underground things like water, sewer, storm and paving. This is a lot of infrastructure for these two that support these houses, right? But you've also got the services, you know, police, fire, schools and trash. And what we see time and again is the property values from these houses maybe barely cover the services if you're lucky in terms of the services consumed. They in no way, shape or form tend to provide enough revenue for long-term maintenance and upkeep on infrastructure, right? And people say, well, maybe our commercial district is going to overproduce and we can undercharge single family homeowners. I get it, but we're seeing cities struggle more and more for financial resources because their development patterns don't produce the revenues they need to serve their citizens. And so we like to talk about what happens for alternates beyond this pattern, right?
Okay, Eric, just, yeah, just one thing. Uh, but it was never my impression that all these things, sidewalks, all these things, it's as if we're putting in sidewalks everywhere and all these other services. These things are largely already here. And you're lucky if you can add, uh, another house here and there. So I didn't understand that. I say I didn't agree and
Well.
You're presenting your whole thing as if we agree with everything you're saying, and it's just like.
Well, so, so let me ask, do, 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 do pipes wear out? Do roads have to be repaved? Do curb and gutter fail? Do streetlights have to be replaced? Do you have a capital budget in place to replace all that infrastructure as it wears out?
We do. We do in this town. It's part of our annual capital budget.
That is awesome.
Towns probably do. I would be shocked.
No, most, most towns do not.
Still, but I think that we don't have enough. I mean, it's like sidewalks alone.
Correct.
I mean, it's a mess. I mean, we've been waiting for ten years in our neighborhood for sidewalks because there's only certain amount of money there, so.
They get stuck each year.
Yeah, but they, they do some each year supposedly work. I just have a different point of view, okay?
Okay.
I don't.
I, I mean, I think the, the question is you have a budget. The, the, a better way to frame the question is, I'm not arguing that you have a budget for these things, and a lot of towns have a budget. Do you have a budget that is adequate for the utility and infrastructure, um, upkeep relative to these for the town? And if it's a ten year wait for sidewalks in a community with failing sidewalks, one might think maybe not.
I don't know what the wait is.
Yeah, and Eric, just, if I could just, I'm saying, you, you list all these things like, you know, oh my God, we have to put lights in, we have to put storm drains.
I list them as you have to maintain them.
This is what a good community is.
Absolutely. I could not agree more. The point is, I'm not saying these have to be installed. I'm saying these have to be maintained. Or some communities that look for green field development.
In property taxes to maintain such.
Absolutely. And you still have to wait ten years for sidewalks.
The, the point, the point that Eric is trying to make is that these are general pieces of infrastructure that, yeah, maybe every street in town doesn't have a street light, maybe every street doesn't have a curb, a sidewalk, but they all have roads. Many of them have water lines, a lot of them have sewer lines as well, their schools. These are generally things that are infrastructure that needs to be maintained and paid for through services over time. And that's not going away.
And replaced.
And replaced and maintained, and we don't historically have enough money to do all these things. That's why we have, you know, big school bonds. That's why we're talking, the town council's talking about, you know, a twenty five to fifty million dollar recreation bond to, you know, upgrade facilities at the high school. So we're not we have lower property taxes than many other municipalities in the state, thankfully because of Pfizer and general dynamics. But we still don't have enough to pay for everything that people expect for services. So again, I think he's trying to make a point here of what single family pays for and doesn't. And if you kind of take some of these generalized assumptions, you'll see how it unfolds in the next set of slides.
Yeah, okay, I just, I think a lot of those things, I don't think it's a big annual cost. That's all, or it's all built into our taxes, the police. Do I know what type of police? No, no.
So, could that end too? Could I ask, could I ask that Jeff or, um, someone from either Kamoine or, or Horsley, I don't know who the right consultant is. But could we in one of our future presentations get that cost per acre, um, for these public services, uh, either as a total number, uh, if we're like including an entire package or splitting it out between cost to maintain water, provide police, you know, those sorts of things, like a cost per acre, I think would be really valuable when we're talking about the land that we have zoned for housing of any kind. Um, and then if, I don't know how difficult it would be to break down that data into the land we have zoned for single family housing versus apartments or multifamilies, et cetera, et cetera. But that cost per acre, I think this is, this is really, really important metric to, to look at what it costs the town to have spaces like this. I mean, I, I really like this framing. I think that it's a fantastic way to look at um, what it really means to, to prefer one type of housing over another.
Yep.
Thank you. So, you know, part of the challenge is what other options are there? Through smaller lot size, through ADUs, through other policy, you know, what happens if we allow more housing choices? You know, this is taking your lot size down from, uh, fifteen thousand square feet to seventy five hundred in this scheme, allowing attached or detached ADUs as an option. You know, we know in a lot of cities duplex is a four letter word. Um, we like to talk about homes with attached ADUs, and we always challenge people to tell us the difference between a home with an attached ADU versus a duplex. Right? They're two units of housing that touch. Terminology matters. How we talk about this for citizens matters, but this is the same amount of land using no more infrastructure and a nominal amount more of services. And it's at six and a half times the density and financial production for what's happening. And so what we like to show is we ran the numbers. This is hypothetical, but not unreasonable for a lot of cities for house values, you know, particularly when we look at the median house value in Groton. And this is coming in at six point two million dollars an acre. Right? This is an example of a financially productive neighborhood providing a lot of choices for people. And one of the things we also like to talk about is, um, this is, we're tying into a study by Christopher Leinberger, and I'm not trying to compare you to, um, Dallas, Texas. I know that's totally unfair and inappropriate. But what they found in the Dallas region is that neighborhoods that had walkable, you know, retail and amenity, things like pizza, coffee, ice cream, beer saw a massive increase in house premiums because people like to. beer saw a massive increase in house premiums because people like to walk to nice things. You have some nice things to walk to in Groton. And that premium really, really increases the value per acre for what you have. Now, we also like to call this the Homer Simpson Plaza because those are his favorite things. You don't have to like the Simpsons, but I do like to walk for coffee and ice cream with my kids. Um, you know, this is where the, the link, you know, we have a lot of links in our slides to where things are coming from. She can cross-reference and check. But again, this is compared to drive-only suburban housing in a large drive-only metro, typical drive-only metro region. And they saw a huge premium for rental housing that has these amenities and walkable, uh, proximity as well. Um, again, when you have all these housing choices, you have room for all of these neighbors to be part of your community and add vibrancy and support those businesses, right? Infrastructure spread across a lot more houses, a lot more property taxes, uh, to help support all the infrastructure and pay for things and reduce the need for bonding and debt service. Um, the other thing we like to talk about is I'm not, this is just a very standard conventional situation. I teach Frank Hummel Development Alliance. We share this. When you look at big box retail, and this is nice, big box retail, this is not an aging big box, you know, whether it's a nicer Costco or you pick the insert your name of building here, they often tend to sit on about nine acre sites. And they often are assessed about eight to nine million dollars in value. And you can look around in Groton to see if you have any, you know, land use for this. But when you look at land use per acre, this is coming in at less than nine hundred thousand dollars an acre in the taxes it provides. Now you may or may not have different tax rates for commercial or residential, but the residential is almost ten X, right? From a per acre basis of what you're seeing for the commercial. And I know a lot of communities think that they're gonna let the commercial carry the tax burden and protect single family homeowners, but this is not a high value land use, right? This is not a good way to generate revenue for your town. And it consumes an inordinate amount of infrastructure in terms of street frontage, curb, gutter, sewer, water lines. This is a loser for towns, right? This is a winner, this is a loser. Um, again, nine to 10, eight million dollars an acre for premiums for this kinds of product type. And so we always like to ask cities, like, what would you do with this extra revenue? Right? You know, there's all kinds of things you could invest in your downtowns, your main streets that would actually create a flywheel of even more value for your place to make it more attractive to be. We're not saying these are the right things for your town. These are just challenges of things that you could make for a nicer place. You know, you talk about climate resiliency, stormwater, you know, better streetscapes, you know, all kinds of benefits for your citizens. You know, or you could talk about more property tax relief for seniors. Right? You could talk about lowering property taxes if there's more taxes coming in from the same land. I'm not telling you what to do with this. I'm saying these are options in a more abundant place. Right?
But you, you heard that, didn't you recommend pretty strongly though, to consider villages type things? So you could walk to places?
Uh, yeah, we, again, that's my preference. I want to be very clear. I'm here to provide you trade-offs so you can make educated decisions for whatever land use pattern you think is best for Groton. I'm not here to tell you what you should do. I have a strong personal preference for walkable neighborhoods. And, and you know, walking to get ice cream and coffee and beer, I think that's a far superior way to live. That may not be the kind of thing that everybody wants, the conditions or community that everybody wants. And I'm here to provide a context for optionality for decision-making, not telling you what to do.
Okay. I know a lot of the big cities you've mentioned in the study here were in much warmer places than we have. Um, and I think Groton has a couple of problems. One is the weather. And if you really want to go out walking to get an ice cream or something in some of these months, of course, not. The other thing is we're not exactly a level, uh, town either. Some neighborhoods really are challenges even walking around. But I think there's such a model now that so many of us are using, um, the Amazons, you know? Um, I think that's been a lifesaver, especially with COVID, as well as Instacart was. Um, you know, you can share electric cars maybe someday, you know, get rid of everybody having to have two cars or something. Um, housing modules, there's all kinds of things in the works, but the idea that you're gonna get everything you need, your fish store and everything else in a village. I didn't understand how that wouldn't be feasible. It'd be interesting.
I don't.
Well, I'd be interested to see some town that did that and how many acres it took and what services they actually had there.
I mean, that's how these towns worked a hundred years ago.
Well, some, to some extent.
And, and I think you can see examples of that here in Groton, right? I think of No Ink Village where you have very close houses, right? Beautiful homes. But right there, you've got Carson's and you can go down and get your shellfish or you can go to Ford's or there's, there's, uh,
City of.
There's the city of Groton, right? That's very similar there. There are pockets, even downtown Mystic, right? And, and those areas that we're speaking of, I think, reflect the data he, he talked about, which is that those drive premiums, people want to live in those types of, of neighborhoods, right? Those are very desirable neighborhoods.
Using those.
Right. And, and I mean, I think you've brought up some of the, the issues the town's been grappling with STRs. Why do tourists want to go there? The same reason that people want to pay a premium to live in those very beautiful historic neighborhoods that were, you'd have your business right next to where you lived and it became walkable and you were walking to work.
No, I'm not disagreeing. There's some villages in this town. That's really not the point. We're solving the housing issue. We're putting in more villages.
But I, I challenge you too, that you, you said that he was presenting one viewpoint as if we just agreed with it. I think you're doing the same thing. I think that, that this village model is desirable, possible and something we can and should work for.
I, I like villages. I'm not saying anything's my viewpoint at this point. I'm just saying they were talking a lot about villages and I was just curious as to the practicality of it, if people really had the choices they wanted. Even if in fact they could give up the car and walk as much as they were saying they could. So.
Moving on. Again, I think about, yeah, I just a quick shout out for, you know, urban three and strong towns or two groups, you know, the, the work I just showed you, this, our analysis is our data. But the methodology approach comes from these groups. They've been pioneering for the last 15 years. We're friends with them and we always like to share their perspective because we find this tax value per acre analysis a really important financial metric for cities to look at how they want their places to be. And again, it, it's a helpful way for you to have good feedback to make informed decisions for what you think is appropriate for your city. And so when we talk about the suburban development patterns and the costs of them, you know, we like to talk about how some of this stuff comes together. And so we always like to point out that, you know, in nineteen sixty-eight, federal for housing laws made, made discrimination based on race illegal. But they still allowed, um, discrimination by using class and economic discrimination as long as it was under the guise of economic development. I'm not accusing anybody in Groton of doing anything like this. But these are patterns we see with zoning codes that seep into them over time. And when we talk about the comparative of this, when we look at a traditional development pattern, we often see, you know, storefronts facing the street. Often there's a common green space that may take care of some of your stormwater. There's on-street parking, shared parking at the back. Um, and we compare this to what we see in our standard zoning that says every lot has to take care of all of its stuff on its own, which means you have large buffers and setbacks or you have limited building footprint. Every site has to take care of all its own parking on its own site. It often has to have its own, um, open space and stormwater components. And you get not a lot of building for a lot of land. And the tax value comes from the building. So if you're only building on a third or a quarter of your site, you're getting of one story, not getting a lot of revenue for the outcome of land, which is your scarce resource as a town. And what we like to talk about is when we talk about parking requirements, these are diagrams of one-story commercial uses for standard parking requirements across the country for office, retail, restaurant and bar. And it shows you how much you can build on each site. Right? This is one story only. And when you look at our suburban development patterns, you wonder why they look like that. The parking requirements drive the form of the outcome more than anything else. And people drive, and I'm not saying people don't drive. But when you have the optionality for walkability, it's a big deal. And when you overlay suburban zoning requirements on your traditional walkable neighborhoods, it's a, it's a form for disaster and challenge for any kind of growth and of evolution for those places. And so we like to talk about this of, you know, scarcity or abundance model, comparing the two. We are biased towards the right because it's a lot more profitable for cities. It's a lot more attainable for small businesses. And it makes for a lot more optionality and walkability for citizens. But you can do the math and take your pick. What we tend to see is when you look at what the property taxes would need to be on the left, it's highly unsuitable for citizens, right? They don't want to pay their own way to support the cost of maintenance for the left option versus the right. So we talked about some financial challenges.
That makes good sense, the one on the right and everything. And stuff I think about.
Yeah. It's again, financial productivity of land. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. And, and what are the regulations that let this be legal? Right? So how could you build another block of this? Like what kind of zoning would it take to allow more of this to happen without seventeen variances and a rezoning and a special exception to allow something to move forward? And I'm not accusing your policies of anything. That's just what we see all over the country. This is so hard to do. This is what all our zoning tends to require. Right? Maybe you want some windows and a thing on the front, but this is basically the outcome of our zoning policies. Um, and we want to talk about some financial challenges with this. And so I teach small development for a national nonprofit and we're trying to help demystify how development works for particularly public officials and for small developers. One of the mantra is if you can't get the rent, you shouldn't build the building, right? All buildings have a cost, debt has to be serviced. That could take out rent and put in mortgage if you're biased towards homeowners, that's totally fine. But things have a cost. The, the productive value of the use has to support that cost if you want something to succeed. And the other thing I like to talk about in the housing space, I'm going to spend a minute here because this is, there's a lot of information in this slide. This was put together originally as analysis by a couple really smart, um, urban economics professors, uh, Michael, uh, Michael, no, Anthony Orlando and Michael Erickson, um, from UC Pomona and Purdue, they looked at cost per square foot of story of multifamily, which is another way to say is the taller the building, the more expensive it is to build. This is related to building codes and a range of other challenges because a single-family house has usually under the residential code, a lot less requirements in a 20-story building or 12-story building, right? Hopefully that's not controversial to anybody. But what they looked is that exact amount of cost through a lot of analysis. I worked with them on their data and said, let's pull it forward from 2018 to 2024 with construction inflation. And then let's also say, instead of just cost per square foot, let's do cost per unit. What's an eight hundred square foot unit going to cost at these cost numbers? And let's put in the cost of one parking space. And the cost of one parking space changes whether it's in a deck versus a surface space versus underground parking. And what you see is that this stair stepping of cost, these cost numbers are arranged for different places. You know, New England's can be more expensive than the southeast, not argue that for, excuse me for a second. But this is just the cost of the building and the parking space. And to explain why this matters, when we teach small development, a really good rule of thumb is that for rental projects, one dollar of monthly revenue, the rent coming in typically supports about a hundred dollars of total project cost of all-in for project cost for everything. It's interest rate sensitive. It tends to work well between five and six and a half percent. Most interest rates for projects are a little bit higher than that right now. So it supports maybe ninety, ninety-five dollars per dollar instead of a hundred. But this is a really crude useful metric to understand how development can or cannot work. And so when we talk about this, you've got these four main components of a project. The vertical means literally the building you see horizontal is pipes, you know, uh, herbs, gutters, all the stuff on the ground. Soft costs or permit fees, design costs, closing costs, realtor fees, land is land. Everything I just showed you for building cost is just this, a little bit of horizontal in buildings, right? For those numbers. You know, what we're seeing best case for an eight hundred square foot unit is it's probably going to cost up to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to build that without the other cost. This is maybe a little more than half the total cost. And so if you're trying to get to a thirteen hundred dollar a month rent, you need your max unit cost to be a hundred and thirty-five thousand, right? This is only half the cost. These are the challenges we face with any kind of development if we're not chasing subsidy to try to close the gap. We spend a lot of time not chasing subsidy to close the gap, looking at policy approaches to try to make housing more attainable for everybody. And so the question is, how do you get more rent and more attainability? You need to be doing lightly parked, really small units. And we like to talk about this, making them fee simple whenever possible. What I mean by that is they could be owned, um, just like a house could be owned. You own the dirt, you own to the sky. You can get a conventional mortgage for the structure, whether it's a townhome, semi-attached or detached. This is how we see the way to bend the curve to make these things possible. These are the metrics we see that work well across the country. You're definitely going to have a little bit of on-street or off-street parking, but probably not even one per unit in these walkable, more compact areas. But you need to, can only really do this in places where you have a reasonable amount of on-street parking, right? So this isn't everything, everywhere situation. We know humans love garages, like that's awesome. I get that it snows. I'm not arguing it's garages. I am saying garages are expensive and they take up space. Right? And we need to see usually when we can get small, compact housing, we come in at around twenty to fifty units an acre, right? That sounds really scary and really dense. But this is what happens when you build on small lots with small housing. You know, we love ADUs. We think they're really important. We think every city should be doing that. But what we like to talk about, because they're not fee simple, you typically have to have cash to build an ADU. Right? I know Fanny and Freddie are working on new loan products for this. But usually it's you have cash or you have enough equity in your house to do a home equity line of credit to build the ADU because there's not good loan products for ADUs because they're not fee simple. Right? So the ability to buy a house takes three percent down in ADU is basically about a hundred percent. So they are wonderful. They're usually only accessible to the wealthy that have this much disposable income. And a hundred and fifty thousand dollars is actually for a really tiny ADU in most places now with inflation is probably two hundred, two hundred and five thousand dollars for a modest sized ADU. And so we talk about zoning and policies, but your subdivision ordinances and minimum lot sizes are one of your major barriers to housing attainability and housing optionality. And so if you allow for optionality for smaller lots or two units of housing that could be fee simple on a lot, you're able to better benefit, leverage the benefits of a more reasonable building code, the residential code, without the complexity of all the IBC, the international building code. And this is really important because if you're talking about missing middle housing, you know, the diagram Jeff showed, the scale of all these different house types. When you get to multifamily and that could be a triplex or a quadplex, you're in the IBC realm. And that gets really hard. And so examples that we like to show as to how you could do more housing that's more attainable, that's fee simple. You know, with smaller lot sizes, you know, it could be the seventy-five hundred square foot as a smaller lot size. If you let the backyard be platted out as its own lot, this just becomes a house on a lot. The financing of this becomes infinitely simpler, even if this homeowner just wants to build an ADU and keep it within their own family for a parent or a child. The, the subdivision ordinance is a powerful tool for attainability. We like to talk about flag lots too, where the backyard could literally be sold off. That doesn't mean it's not like within multi-generational households. This provides a lot of optionality for aligning the current financial system in America with the way builders like to build for fee simple, for smaller houses to be more attainable on the same land. And it's a great way to maintain character and limit impact to your communities from a visual streetscape standpoint. Again, these are examples of how this stuff can come in and play out. We, we did a rezoning, this is Atlanta, you can say it's fine, it's not you, but the, the, the math is pretty basic. We had an eight thousand square foot lot in a transitioning neighborhood. We ran a whole financial analysis for the nonprofit we're helping with this. And so we showed just running typical costs. I have a massive like three hundred slide deck that walks you every step of every cost for everything. We're happy to send a link and share to. But we said, if you built one modest two-bedroom house on this lot with all the costs, these are the total outcomes. This is how it relates to AMI in Atlanta. And we said, well, what else could you do? Right? You could add an ADU, which actually makes it more attainable, but dramatically increases the down payment because there's so much more house to build. So that makes it really inaccessible financially for a lot of people. But that is a great rent for the renter, right? There's no doubt about that. We said, what happens if you split the lot into two lots and you did two houses and two ADUs? That works out pretty well, but the down payments are still really high. Right? And then we said, what happens if you just allow this to be four houses for sale? This is a subdivision ordinance question. This is a minimum lot size question. The main house became more attainable and the other three houses, small format cottages all became more attainable as well. Not as attainable in total versus a house in the ADU, but the down payments were much more manageable all the way across the board. This outcome is universal. This is basic development map. Now, the numbers will change and vary. But the comparative from one house per lot to the four we're showing here, that is a universal difference. Right? This is in here for y'all to look and compare the slides later. I can include Jeff for the link of the whole long ad nauseam presentation that goes through every last inch and ounce of cost that we put into this. I like to talk, you know, set, building a new construction house anywhere for less than two hundred thousand dollars, that's hard to do. We did three of them for a nonprofit. They could look better. I'm still mad at the builder for the trim on a couple of these. I'm not saying these are right home architecturally, but each of these sold for one ninety-nine in Atlanta in the last two years, right? These are one-bedroom cottages with no parking on a thirty by thirty lot. We help nonprofits do this all the time because there's such a shortage of one-bedroom houses throughout the country. And so again, thirty by thirty, nine hundred square foot lot, one ninety-nine sale price, like this was eighty percent of AMI. The builder and the nonprofit accidentally made money on this deal. Right? Providing attainable housing, which they were able to cycle back into the next project to provide more attainability. Imagine that they didn't need subsidy, they actually turned a profit. And again, when we look at, this is Atlanta, I'm not trying to say this is y'all, but it is actually not completely different. These are standard minimum lot sizes in Atlanta. You know, seventy-five hundred square feet, nine thousand square feet here, eighteen thousand square feet. I know you all have some twelve thousand, nine thousand square foot lots, you know, across the spectrum. This is that lot I showed you at thirty by thirty, right? But I also like to point out, this is Atlanta's historic minimum lot sizes from the nineteen twenties. This is what we have today. We always preach that you look at your land use regulations from the twenties and maybe in the eighteen eighties and eighteen nineties for Connecticut to translate to New England. Look at the regulations you had then that allowed these great communities to be built. Look at the difference of how you're regulating them now compared to how they were regulated a hundred, a hundred and twenty, a hundred and forty years ago. This is Atlanta nineteen twenties to twenty twenty. This is Atlanta nineteen twenties to twenty twenty, right? You wonder why housing is scarce. We also want to talk about transportation costs. And this matters because. All these how all these housing experts, we talked about being housing cost burdened. That means you spend more than thirty percent of your income on housing. Like that's a metric from HUD, that's everybody's gig. Uh, but they also, this is from HUD, if you spend more than fifty percent of your income on housing and transportation. You're also housing cost burdened. Really simple math, that means if you spend more than twenty percent of your income on transportation. You're also transportation cost burdened, right? Pretty simple. Uh, subtraction right there. And we like to point out that a thirty thousand dollars a year, if you spend more than five hundred bucks a month on transportation. You're absolutely transportation cost burdened. Compounding the fact that you're almost guaranteed to be housing cost burdened with limiting housing options. We also like to point out, this is from AAA, I like their data because they're super pro car. And they point out that new the cost of new vehicle ownership, and this is new. Um, and across a range of spectrums, but these are not fancy new, these are like the Honda Civic news. It's about nine hundred, twelve hundred bucks a month, and they have a great little calculator on their website. You can put in exact make model year and it'll tell you true positive ownership, depreciation, tags, title, fuel, maintenance upkeep. And so what that means is. Like the annual cost of a vehicle is ten thousand to fifteen thousand dollars a year. Right? That's what having a car costs you. Right? Flat out. That means if you're not making fifty three thousand dollars a year. Your cost burden by having a car. Right? And so we see time and again. You know, person absolutely dependent on their car for employment. Car breaks down, they're out of a car for a week. That often means it can be out of a job. Right? If they don't have other transportation options to their employment, that really puts them in a financial risk or fragile situation. Right? And if you have two cars in your house would make this work, it doubles it, it's not fun. And then one of the things we want to talk about to tie this back to your climate action plan. Is this is from our world and data and climate watch where they're looking at how, where is America? Um, in terms of climate, gas, greenhouse gas emissions. You know, we are up here, transportation. Is more than double the cost we spend on buildings in terms of climate, you know, greenhouse gas accounting for things. Almost every patron nation in the world outside of Canada, because they drive like we do. Has transportation and buildings almost equal or a lot closer. When you're in a drive only situation and a drive only built environment, you're burning insane amounts of greenhouse gases for your transportation. This is, we are a massive outlier in this country. Our land use patterns are the reason for that. And then the other thing we like to look at, this is from University of Michigan. How are people getting to work in America in twenty twenty? Again, let's ignore COVID for a minute, um, this is before COVID hit. The vast majority of Americans are driving alone. Right? You know, walking and biking, public transit. These are just not viable options for so many people because we make this function illegal through our land use requirements. Right? So you wonder why our transportation. Uh, greenhouse gases are so high, this is what people choose to do. That's your response to the built environment and the choices they have. You know, I get to live in a really, you know, old part of Atlanta, I e-bike everywhere. It is so much better than driving everywhere because it's horrible in my city. Uh, I make a lot of choices to not have to drive. And it's a much more pleasant outcome, and I'm not saying anybody else should do that. But I'm saying having the option to do that is really wonderful for those that would like to partake. And we also like to ask. You know, not every site, not every project could be car light. And where they are located really matters, right? I'm not saying this stuff works everywhere across your town, you have very different conditions as every city in town does. And so I want to talk about your urban fabric. Like where should you be thinking about? Attainability, um, practical attainability as an effort. We like to say focus on your fabric, and what we mean by that. Is these are to the exact same scale. Um, this is a typical suburban situation, big shopping plaza. Um, this is metro Atlanta, I wouldn't advocate anybody going to spend time here. This is Covington, Georgia, a really small, wonderful town with a beautiful square, they filmed tons of movies here. It's super scenic, but just look at the density between these two. Think about the financial productivity of these two components, these are massively different, right? This is a model for scarcity, you know, for tons of infrastructure supporting really limited land use. This is a model for a lot less infrastructure supporting a ton. Of property tax generating wonderful uses for people to walk and drive to and enjoy. And so. Where we think about this stuff, you know, Jeff told me this after I put this together, I totally understand City of Groton's not part of your town. But what I always do to help cities understand where are your best places? Like we say, do a Sanborn scan, I simply Google, you know, Sanborn maps for your town, see what you can do. Where are the Sanborns for your town from the nineteen twenties, right? That was the cutoff of making great places before World War Two for walkability when that was how villages were typically built out. Because they were not auto dominated. Again, we usually use October, Black Monday, October twenty eighth, nineteen twenty nine is the cutoff when the Great Crash happened. And again, before nineteen twenty nine, it was car light. No zoning and no subsidy, right? That's how we built cities. Which meant we were mobility flexible, use flexible and highly cost conscious. With making sure there's enough buildings to pay for the infrastructure we're putting in as a town. Right? This is how we built places that were walkable mixed use and paid for themselves as we went. I totally get this is not the zoning and part of your jurisdiction as City of Groton. Like I didn't, wasn't able to find an example of this for the Mystic area. I got to Street View that that is gorgeous and a wonderful area too. But this is the nineteen twenties uh, facilities for the the city of Groton. You know, they even had some great snippets of how much water supply and capacity they have from the fire insurance maps. To show where this kind of dense walkable stuff was, right? If I can find Mystic, I'll definitely try to pull that in for you guys as well. But again. We also like to point out, we should be legalizing, re-legalizing these village centers. That can pay for themselves, right? And think about the policies that would allow that to happen. And where would it be best possible to focus this village infrastructure as an outcome? Again, abundance versus scarcity. When you have this nice compact grid or a deviation of it for your older neighborhoods. It's mobility rich, you can bike, walk, drive, you have choices. The uses can be much more flexible, it's very revenue positive. This standard suburban model is absolutely car dependent, it's highly use restrictive. And it's going to be regular revenue negative nine times out of ten. And what this happens is every person that comes to live in this neighborhood. Tends to add vibrancy and support local businesses, it becomes a positive. Every person that moves into this area is consuming scarce resources, whether that's roads and schools. You know, adding to traffic, you know, nobody wants more people over here because they want it all for themselves, even doesn't pay for themselves. This is better with the more humans that are there. And so I can, you know, Jeff, I can stop there because I think. The um. IRC IBC stuff is really going to be a bit in the weeds compared to this higher level conversation. And you know, I think the biggest thing I can say just really quickly, I'll do a quick brief and kind of put a pin in it. Is we spend a lot of time looking at the difference between single family development. Large multifamily. And what happens for this missing middle for everything else, it's really hard, right? This incremental infill requires a ton of brain cells and skill. The returns aren't really that good, expenses are high, so most people either do simple single family. Or they go really big, right? We don't have this good stuff that makes for great communities. And one of the things I'd like to point out is one house per lot won't get you where you need to go from a standard lot size standpoint. But building codes make this really hard to do small scale multifamily, and part of the reason. Jeff and Horsey Witten asked me on the team is to help them understand how building codes impact outcomes for things. And the bottom line, I'm going to stop here. Is that when you go to a. Commercial building, an IBC building, they have sprinklers, they have all these additional requirements that just make them more expensive to build. Which means they have to rent for more money because they're really expensive buildings. If you can find ways to deliver small format residential construction housing in your town. You have a shot at attainability, if that is a goal you want to pursue. Which gets back to why I was talking about subdivision ordinances. And small house types as opposed to big, more scarier types of housing. And I can stop there and I can. I Jeff, if you want, we can talk questions, Judy and I can have a conversation, I'm happy to go back and pull up any slides if you guys want to drill down on specific questions for anything else as well.
Yeah, so obviously we've got about ten minutes left, we want to respect everyone's time. Hi, Judy, thank you for for listening and I saw you nodding. Uh, throughout, uh, do you want to give you, uh, if you, if you want, uh. A moment to say anything, uh, as a precursor, uh, to to our further conversations. Um, Zerantin was on your mind after, after this conversation?
It's on mute.
You're on mute.
May not be super helpful to everybody, but I was thinking about. Eric's description of. Uh, walkable places and village centers and being able to walk down the street for ice cream or whatever. Um, and then the comment about the topography perhaps being an issue. Uh, in some parts of Groton, and I just have to share with you, I was just in Halifax, Nova Scotia for a week. Visiting one of my children who lives in the Hydrostone neighborhood. Um, which is missing middle heaven. And. And and in a city that has the steepest, um, main street in Canada. So, you know, topography is not necessarily the challenge, I think everybody might imagine. And I just, that that is a neighborhood that is just so lively and so beautiful. Um, and people want to live there and it's very different from the parts of Halifax that have really big apartment buildings. And all single family, all of which is in that city, but. Um. It is a different kind of environment and it's feasible in almost any context, which I guess leads me to. Think about. You know, how can? Some of these tools to advance. Um, you know, a more attainability. Uh, and more social choices, how might those opportunities? Benefit Groton? Uh, and how might those things perhaps help you in other aspects of your community planning? And who benefits?
I think we had a lot of time for questions from commissioners too, for we.
That's okay, I this was really a discussion piece, I mean.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that, and I think the thing about topography that can create inclusivity problems too. Um, serious ones, so anyway. More to come, so does anyone have any other questions you wanted to ask?
I thought you had.
I just have some thoughts, I mean, you know, what we heard this evening is actually not an epiphany of sorts. Um, whereby you awaken and say, God, this is great stuff. But what it did provide us, the ability to to create a template of what we want for Groton, frankly, as far as what I see. It provides us potential data, provides us perspective and analysis that allows us to make some decisions that we have not, um. We've not encountered before or had to address per our typical, you know, monthly process. So to me, it was eye opening without the epiphany, but it allows us to utilize this data to make some decisions for our town. So I thought it was was great, I didn't read through all two forty six slides, but the fact is, it was, um. It created a very nice template, I think, um, as we move toward the meeting on the twenty third, that was my thoughts.
So I charge I charge extras for epiphanies and I can work with you as an ad service to the contract if you need some epiphanies, but that's a separate, that's a separate scope.
We usually go to priests or pastors for that.
And I, I, it was good to hear Jeff has. It was good to hear Jeff has some of the tools that are going to help us on some of these things too, I think, for sure. Anybody else?
Um. Yeah, I mean, I agree, it's it's things we've heard before, and I guess we do have to decide. From a cost standpoint, you know. I I look at things and I say maximizing the cost of a. Uh, or the income, let's say that we can get from an acre. May not be the best. So there's always that trade off, it's like you could put thirty five trailer park, you know, trailer homes. On a piece of property. And that might maximize its use, maximize its density, maximize its income even, but. Is that good? I don't think so, that's not the way a lot of people in Groton want to live. And. You know, we've heard it time and time before that we have a certain kind of community, people want to maintain that. So. That's the balance and that's the, you know, the wrestling match that has to take place. Uh, to balance those.
Well, one of the things just to that end, we're running some analysis right now for, um. New Orleans, just not turning to the USP New Orleans. But we're comparing a brand new spanking fancy luxury apartment building on nine acres, looking at its tax value per acre from Greenville, South Carolina. That is as nice and as fancy as you can get, you know, outside of New York or DC. Comparing it to small format duplexes in New Orleans, the standard small buildings. On a tax value per acre, small format duplexes on small lots outperform the brand new luxury apartment building. Right? So it's not just, it's not trailer parks versus this versus that, right? That's part of the conversation. But it's also how are, how are you using your land efficiently? Because I'm under the impression that you probably can't annex a bunch more land in. To generate more income, right? You have to work with the scariest resource of the land you have. What's the most sustainable, responsible way to use that land? For all your citizens that are here or would like to be there?
Yeah, and just one more thought. Density in my mind, you know, is a two edged sword because. You know, you're bringing a lot of people in a small area, but. You increase the requirements for schools, you increase the requirements for fire and police. You invariably probably generate more crime, and I'm sure there's some slide that you can bring in on that. Um, and that is also, you know, this kind of.
Yeah. One, one thing, one thing I would definitely ask to look at with Kamoine. Is we have so few kids in America, everybody's like, every, everybody thinks every new house is going to bring two kids with them. You know, that that it doesn't happen, and particularly for focusing on smaller format, one and two bedroom units as a household team to add. The odds that you're adding kids to the mix. I'm sure a kid's going to show up once in a blue moon. But that gets a lot more revenues to the schools without bringing a bunch of kids to serve. Right? So there's a lot of, go ahead, Judy.
I just, I just wanted to echo what you're saying because we do a lot of that work as well, and I think sometimes people forget. That, that there's a direct connection. In the market between. The type of household, the size of the household and what the housing product is. For which they would like to have choices. So when the only choice is a single family dwelling, um. They may or may not choose that, they may not be able to choose that for economic or other reasons. But when you give people a choice for a housing product. That is. Perhaps more likely appropriate for their household size and composition. It changes the makeup of. Of who lives there, and it doesn't necessarily mean that you're getting families with children in every single type of house. Housing unit that you're building. So there's actually a fiscal balancing that happens when you create more housing choice. And different types of housing. Um, you have some that drive more cost and some that drive more revenue. But you end up with a very different, more balanced fiscal picture when you, when you diversify your housing stock.
Okay, let's go to Michael.
There's some comments I would like to make and some things that I would like to see discussed at our next meeting. Because I think that also like these costs that are involved in housing. Are made more efficient if. People are living in a closer area and you have one policeman who can service then. Many more houses because they doesn't have to drive as far, same for. But school buses, whatever else it is.
Right.
So there are efficiencies that seem like we're going along that, but, um. What I just want to make sure that in the next conversation that one thing I would like to know is. All of the baby boomers right now that are occupying. Houses are not going to be occupying houses in fifteen years. You know, it's just, that's just a fact of life, right? And so those houses, so I'll do, I'm just, you know. So those houses will become available. And there, and those people won't be moving into another house, right? So that's something to just think about, well, they're going to be gone, right? And so those houses will all be available at some level. And and so older communities then will have this opportunity to then use those houses in other ways.
So can I just jump in, because we have, we have friends in Maine that we help with a lot of housing policy work. And there's a lot of communities across Maine that have. A great, wonderful housing stock of all these old houses that are not in use. And they're just too big. To ever be a starter home, right? And so we like to talk about what are policies? That allow those bigger, older homes to be subdivided internally. Into three plex, four plex, six plexes to make them more attainable, but keeping the traditional form and character of the community. To allow them to have evolving uses in life.
Yeah, no, I, yeah, that's what I'm thinking, and because I know in the neighborhood that I live in, there are. A half a dozen more houses with one, you know, a widow living in them. Uh, and so those are, you know. I don't know, something to think about, as far as like the building code goes, I I don't know how we can. Get past that because what was built in the nineteen fifties could not be built today. That house wouldn't, you know, insulation. Uh, just the twenty four foot cape cannot be built anymore. Because the the measurements don't work when you start. You know, using the new building codes, right? The walls are thicker, you can't get a staircase up to the second floor anymore, doesn't work. And so some of those costs are. You know, just part of the, part of what it is.
Um. So just a quick thing to jump in there, I was actually talking to our, uh, building inspector, Tim Brennan today about this, and he was talking about how there's. Some changes happening or things being proposed about single egress buildings. Uh, at the state level, national level, uh, building code. Um, from an egress perspective, so there are some things that, uh, different groups are looking at.
That would be really helpful, yeah, no doubt, no, it's just, and maybe that that is a design issue. And so then something else that I would like to point out is that we're focusing primarily, uh, and this has got nothing to do with us. But we're focusing primarily on. The cost of housing, but and but and. And how much it costs to live there and that this person who's earning fifteen dollars an hour. and how much it costs to live there and that this person who's earning $15 an hour cannot afford it. But federal minimum wage, if it had kept up with inflation since 1938, when it's implemented, would be $28 an hour today. So there is also this other thing that we have no control over is that, uh, you know, wages aren't where they were when all of these things came about. And that is also, that's another problem, but you know, that's out of our control.
Okay. Hey Lauren?
Yeah, so I, I had a couple of thoughts jotted down here. I appreciated the data. I appreciated the way some of these, these concerns were reframed, new ways to think about it and some creative solutions. Specifically when I think about a lot of the anxieties we're having with the new housing units that are being built. And I'll, I'll get to the, the fact that it's primarily on one side of town in a second, but the, these big dorm style apartments. I, I don't know if that's necessarily, a lot of people are opposed to that particular type of apartment building, but I think that there are other solutions that we can have where we, we build units in a volume of units that don't necessarily look like that or function like that because, um, you know, and I'm thinking again, of knowing Village reminds me a lot of this neighborhood I lived in, uh, in New Haven, Edgewood Park. And the benefit of Edgewood Park was beautiful, three floor apartments. They were all one floor apartments, two bedrooms, about 1,000 to 1,200 square feet. Gorgeous historic homes, very closely built together, very walkable, right next to recreation amenities, but also close to storefronts, grocery stores, et cetera. Those are the kinds of neighborhoods that I think we could and should maybe be looking at. If we do any changes to our zoning of, of promoting, because they add that community character that a lot of people want to maintain even as we pursue more density. And I think creativity in the, in the housing sizes and lot sizes and those arrangements are what going to, are what's going to pull us away from these apartment month, like the, the big dorm style buildings that we keep seeing. And, and actually getting us to, to developments that the community can support and, and feel less anxious about what's moving into their neighborhood. And I, I appreciate that this question keeps coming up. Who is Groton for, right? I think that the way that me and my family live in our neighborhood is a lot different than folks on the rest of this commission live in their neighborhood, right? Just based on where we live and how we live, right? Young professionals versus folks who are, are later in their careers or retired. And how we use our services, right? Who Groton is for is I think a fundamental question of what we're trying to answer when we start looking at housing types. And, and it does feed into affordability and it feeds into density and it feeds into transportation issues, I think that we've talked about before. But my last point here is when we're thinking about this, I keep coming back to the integration of spatial uses, right? I have a problem with deciding that one part of town is for one type of use or one type of building or, you know, we can only build housing here. Because you end up having cascading impacts down the line to certain neighborhoods and therefore certain demographics. And we are, what you see is a demographic stratification within our own town that didn't perhaps used to exist as severely as it does now. And that in turn leads to certain parts of town not receiving services or consideration and only receiving additional density of units. So when we think about our creative uses for housing, I, I also want to think about where we are allowing these uses spatially within town and integrating spatial uses throughout town.
No, thanks everybody. I think, um, I'll just give you my perspective because it's a little bit different. For me, um, my first house, I was single, I got a three bedroom, one bath house. And it was always about building equity. I had enough rooms, I had kitchen and bathroom, all this everything need. I was always looking to build equity. Because I thought a house really gives you, it can give you a piece of the American dream, whatever. But I think that's why I find missing so much in our conversations. For example, years ago, I know I lived in Stanford and you could buy condos for, I don't know, $5,000 you could buy a, you can put a 10% down payment on a condo. And it's kind of like, what can people like the younger people at EB or something like that? And single people even, how can they build equity or why don't we have more ownership? Because I know you mentioned some which were interesting, I thought. And certainly review those ideas. But it's just something I want to, it's not to be solved tonight or anything. But it'd be nice if we had some options because I think that gives people more ownership in the community too. That sort of connection, makes them maybe volunteer to help land trust or things like that. But anyway, this is another piece I wanted to bring up, so.
What's our 50% is rental? Is that roughly?
For EB?
No, for the town.
50, 60, 40. It's, it's a pretty.
Including the city?
Uh, yeah.
60%?
I, I think it's around a 60, 40 split.
Okay.
Yeah, close, close to that.
The 60% rental or ownership?
Ownership.
Ownership.
Oh, ownership. Yeah, we're thinking people.
I think our mixed use district is working. Seems like, I mean, potentially.
Well, oh yeah, hell, so this is like, I think we have one more.
Okay.
Hal, would you like to add your comments or questions?
Okay, I'll throw it in here is that one thing in terms of how we disperse things, I've noticed just to remember that there are three real grocery stores, including Aldi's in all of Groton. And none of them are in Mystic and none of them are in the City of Groton.
Yep.
They're in a two, three miles, two mile stretch, which is if we're going to go for walkability, that's really needs to be, I'm sorry, the core of our walk, our most walkable area until we've exhausted that. So I'm afraid that's something we're saddled with. And we're just seeing under development in what we think is going to, well, that's preaching to the choir here on exactly where we know things should begin more dense. But that is the reason for having the denser core, because that's where the grocery stores are. And that's where we want people to be because of it, and that makes the most sense. At the very north end is the sub base, at the very south end is, is EB and Pfizer. So that is kind of our, our, our core that we're going to be saddled with. Everything else is sort of outskirts, Mystic isn't an anomaly. I really appreciate from this thing is putting some numbers, some dollar numbers onto it. I, I, I like the idea of, yeah, you can cram something full of trailers and that's not what we want, or I'm sorry. Manufactured homes and it's not what we want to see necessarily. But more like the, the clustered homes that we really don't see enough of, and I think that's kind of the mystic, the missing mill that we grew up with. I'm just comparing it to growing up with, we're North Philadelphia, which kind of fell apart because of just different monetary things, but giant homes clustered together, all became apartments that became the way it worked. It became very walkable. Northwest Portland, where I lived for a while, same kind of thing. Single family homes next to apartments, next to everything else, that's the way it was zoned. It's tough to move into, but that does, it happens over time. But you're absolutely right, we kind of zoned ourselves out of it in the outskirts, but still it goes along where the stuff already is. It clusters around the grocery stores, around the schools. And they are where they are unless we're going to decide on some new places to put it. So I, I, so I said, I think we are kind of preaching to the crowd, to, to preaching to ourselves here in terms of what we're going to do. But we do have some, some models of it, of the sub base housing, which for purely financial reasons turned out to be mostly cluster housing. So we, we do have that kind of model that we can go for. What I'd like to see in some of the studies is where this has happened elsewhere. I, I kind of mentioned North Philadelphia, that sort of happened the way it did. But Cupertino, California, which is as suburban as it could be and as dense as it could be. This kind, and it was zoned to death, but you still have low rise, super dense areas with multiple houses on small lots crammed together a ton. So that kind of thing, not looking like California homes, they all look like Eichler California homes, but that kind of thing would absolutely work here. So I'd like to see that kind of model molded into the information that we get. Is that it, other places have done this later in their lives, taken regular sized lots and put four houses onto it, six houses onto it without it looking like, well, like anything else, it looks like little, little tiny communities. In the case of Cupertino, not, not so much walkable, not walkable at all, but it could have been, and that's what we want to work for.
So Hal, just to jump, if I, if I can really quick.
Just one second. Yeah, that's okay. Then you have Daly City too, if I won't mention that.
Oh yeah, that's kind of the opposite.
I wanted, um, if there is anything else, um, we want to probably close the meeting out pretty soon. Well, did somebody else want to say something?
Yeah, yeah, if I, if I could, I just wanted to, yeah, just no problem, just to, to respond to Hal to give a pitch. You know, Union Studios, a team member here, you know, they're the main architecture team member. And we're, and they've done some amazing work on Cape Cod, right? For some of these cluster homes and that are also, I think, highly generally appropriate for the New England context. And they're just beautiful projects. And we actually are on a team with Union right now, helping the Cape Cod Commission put together a catalog of really amazing pre-approved plans for the Cape, both small format cottages and missing middle. So I'm from Atlanta, but I'm working with them on the Cape to come up with strategies and house types to do everything you're talking about in a highly contextual fashion for all of New England, right? So we're not starting from, we're not starting from zero with how to do this.
Okay, great. Thanks for that.
Seems like we have.
So yes, John?
And, and just a couple of things to close out, obviously tonight is not the end of the conversation. You know, one of the things I like to think about a little bit is why are we here? How did we get here? We've been hearing from a lot of people in the community that, all right, we've been seeing a lot of these big, you know, dorm style or large multifamily apartment buildings. Can't we do something else? Why aren't we getting more single family? You know, as Eric's number showed, a lot of times the single family, the numbers don't work out unless we're getting houses in the $1 million plus range. Like that's what, when we talk to developers, that's what it takes to pencil things out. So these are options. And as you're thinking about the plan of conservation, development, zoning changes, three, five, however many years out, how can we think about how some of these can work within the context of Groton? To think about, one of the comments, Michael Cannon said about minimum wage. I try to think about the things that are within my sphere of influence.
I just, I mean, it's, this is some, a lot of these things we have zero control over.
Exactly. But what are the things that we have control over? And that's what I'm thinking about. When I think about the things that I can do, I try to act only within my sphere of influence. So what's within your sphere of influence? And a lot of these policies and zoning are within your sphere. So as you're thinking about this and what we want Groton to look like over the next five, 10, 15 years, who we want to live here, as well as, as much as yes, we know that there's going to be baby boomers dying off over the next 15 years. Do we want to tell people right now that are housing constrained or can't get a house that sorry, you have to wait 15 years for everybody to, all that age bracket to die for you to get a house?
I just want those numbers included in our new housing stock at some level or to think about it.
They're, they're being considered.
Yeah.
Yeah. And, and also the thing that.
Like you're talking about ownership attrition, I guess is a way to say it.
Yeah. And most of those people are owners, right? Or a lot of them are.
Yeah. And, and also as part of that, you have to remember that many of these houses that were built 50, 60, 40 years ago, over time, unless there's major renovations done to them, those houses are not good anymore. You know, our old historic homes, a hundred years or so ago, have a lot of really good bones. As somebody who bought a house that's 40 years old, the amount of money I've had to invest in it in the last few years because of deferred maintenance is disgusting. So, and that's what you see across the board. So as we think about these things, you know, buying a house for $300,000, that's 1,000 square feet and it was built in 1950. There's a lot of hidden costs there.
Okay. Well, great. Well, I want to thank all the commissioners for all your work on this big proposal and staff, it was great support. And the people that wrote in and the audience, thanks for coming, appreciate your interest very much. And do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. Second?
Okay. All right.
Thanks, everybody.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.